Welcome to the Mountain City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 9th at 7:00. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, you say, usually I wait till the last minute to say updates and stuff, but I just want to say one thing right away. Our technical bonding bill correction was passed out of the House this week, so we're one step closer to hopefully getting that passed out of the Senate and then signed, and we can start using that 10.3 million, so, anyway.
Wonderful.
Update there. We have the agenda, do we have any amendments?
No amendments.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, the agenda is approved, and we got the consent agenda, does someone want to go through that?
I can go through that. Consent agenda, three items, A, approved payment of claims, B, approved minutes from the March 26, 2024 regular meeting, C, programmatic maintenance agreement, stormwater management, facilities, and wetland buffers between the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District and the City of Mound.
Okay, we got the consent agenda, does anybody want to talk about any of those? All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
I can make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
You know what, I'm sorry, I do have a question, Matt, maybe you can answer. When I was reading through this maintenance agreement, I'm just kind of wondering-
So, we got to pull it first?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just ask you afterwards, I just have a curious question about it.
Okay, so we're going to pull that item C, so we're going to approve A and B, and then we're going to pull C, and then we'll talk about that in a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember McInney?
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Mayor Hall?
Aye. Okay, those two are approved, and go ahead with C.
Matt, I read through all this, and my question mostly is, what perpetrated this? I mean, have you always been in congruence with them throughout, or is this kind of a new thing?
So, whenever, whenever we're doing a project that needs a stormwater component to it, we typically have to fill out an individual agreement for each one of those, and so everything that's in that agreement is, are things that we should be doing already anyway as part of the MS4, the SWIP, NPDS permits, and we just wanted to have one single document so we don't have to track one for all of the individual projects.
Got it, I figured it was for ease, but I was just curious if they were adding things, or if it was just duplicitous.
No, it's been part of their rules, and they're just, we're just trying to streamline it going forward.
Okay, that's great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, can I get a motion to approve for C on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, for C is approved. Number five, we got comments and suggestions from anybody that's, the topic's not on the agenda. Don't see anybody? I'll give it a minute. All right, moving on, we got number six, Orinol Police Department Activity Report for March 2024. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
And thank you for unredacting everything.
It all got fixed, it sounds like.
Wonderful, thank you.
Perfect, yeah.
Snap his fingers.
It sounds like there was some follow-up on your guys' end too, so things worked good, heard it from a lot of angles, so we got it taken care of, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so I don't have it with me tonight, I don't have the truly redacted copy, but I did look through a lot of it. As far as March goes, pretty consistent from last year, I think we're actually down in numbers as far as calls for service, our SIF, our self-initiated field activity remains higher, per usual, that tends to trend higher than our calls for service in the area. Thefts and mental health are kind of the stark bits on there that you'll see, that we, we're starting to see that increase, we're getting close to summer, it's getting hot, people are out and about, so we're going to start seeing a smidge of an increase in that, so I'll reiterate like I did before, make sure people are locking up their houses, locking up their cars, it is a very safe community, but things happen, people do find crime of opportunity, and that's truly what we're kind of dealing with, is petty crime of opportunity at this point, so.
Cool. Outside of any questions?
Are you guys, I think last time, maybe two meetings ago, we were talking about like staffing and all that stuff, are you guys still like fully staffed?
Yes, actually, we're looking to go plus one, so, so we're at that point now, we actually just got approved from a grant to add an additional party to our PD, and I don't know, I'm sure you guys are familiar, maybe you're not, but we'll be adding a K-9 program to our team, a non, non-physical apprehension dog, it'll track, and we can sniff, we do all sorts of fun stuff with it, but it will not be a bite dog, for lack of a better way to put that, so. So we are, we are transitioning to that, no, we're doing quite well with that, our retention's very good, and people, people seem to enjoy working here, so.
Cool, all right, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. All right, got number seven, 2024 Lift Station Improvements Bid Approved, Bid Review and Approval.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, last Tuesday, April 2nd, we held bids for the 2024 Lift Station Improvements Project, which is, just to remind you, that's at the corner of Sunset Lane and Sycamore, and we actually got nine bids, so that's a very good result, and the low bid was Woodmere Construction for $399,681.23. They are a responsible contractor, and they've constructed several lift stations in the city before, so we do recommend awarding to them, and then as part of the resolution in your packet, it also notes authorizing direct purchase of generator, pumping equipment, and control panel. Those items there, so, went through that pretty quick, do we have any questions?
All right. Was it like 550 with the additional purchases, I think? If we, like, if we go with Woodmere?
Yeah, so one, right around 154,000 for the additional items on there, and then engineering on top of that, yeah, so, but, yeah, so we were, their low bid was a little over $160,000 less than our estimates.
Cool. Good job. All right, does anybody have any other questions?
I feel like I'm going to ask you this every time, but how many are left after this one?
Twenty, oh, after this one? Three reconstructs and one rehab.
Sweet.
Wow. All right, got a resolution on page 850, if someone wants to make that.
Can do that. I'd like to make a resolution accepting bid for 2024 Lift Station Improvements, City Project Number PW 2403.
All right, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes, thanks. All right, number eight, we got rental, watercraft, business license ordinance, and fee schedule update.
This is just a follow-up from two weeks ago, the ordinance looks a little bit different from last time it was here, just Kevin Kelly, City Clerk, wanted to clarify vehicles that are towing the boats and things to keep, to basically stick with the code and statute that we have licensed vehicles on the road versus unlicensed ATVs or something that might be using city streets to access launches, and then there's also a resolution for the fee schedule to put in place a $200 fee that will be annual, April 1 to March 31. So, other than that, I, there's no real differences, I don't know, Scott, if you had anything that you thought you needed to jump in on, but otherwise, it would just be a motion to approve the ordinance, and then a second motion to approve the fee schedule resolution, we would need to publish it in the paper, and then it would go into effect as soon as it's been published, and we will, we will include that in a letters that will then go out, we were kind of waiting to send out letters from Andy to make sure that this was going to either pass or at least continue on in some form, so.
So the only change to the fee schedule is adding in the 200?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, I've, I've gone back and forth in this, and I just want to bring it up one last time, I know I've talked to you a little bit about this, Scott, but, you know, I think it just does a perfect job at leveling the playing field for everybody, but I still am questioning the two businesses that have gone through the process to get cup agreements and are already paying taxes to Mound, if, if they could be exempt from the $200 registration fee. You know, they employ a lot of first-time kids from Mound, they've both been in business since 2013, longstanding businesses, and I, I just feel like they, they're already contributing to our, I guess what we're trying to improve on, and that's getting everybody to kind of pay equally for our streets and everything, I kind of feel like they've already done that, so I wanted to talk about that a little bit, to see if, I know I've kind of brought it up, I don't know, I feel like it would be something that would be easy to add an exemption for those that have gone through a cup agreement and have a brick and mortar.
So the CUP is not specific to what we're talking about here?
No, I, I understand, but, but they're already paying taxes to Mound where the other businesses are not.
I mean, the hypo, so then now we're kind of picking and choosing, I mean legally, is that even an option?
Well, an example may be where a city may have a community swimming pool and would charge residents a different rate than they would charge non-residents, so there is precedent there because to, you can have some difference in fee because of, of those, say a business that has its locate, you know, has its location, whether it was a brick and mortar, or they're running a home occupation, you know, they're out of, you know, they're citizens, so to speak, or resident businesses, I mean, you could use that same logic for that, too.
Well, I think this only, and, and Jesse, maybe you know this, but I think it only has to do with two businesses, and that's Metro Lakes and Bay Rentals.
I, those are the only ones that have CUPs, but then we also have at least one that is operating under a commercial license, because like Alan Almas has a, they have boats in the water, so, I mean.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
So I, I guess to your, to your question is, you know, you're kind of trying to figure out how local brick and mortars would work with this ordinance versus non-resident, because I, I would, I would just caution to, I'm, I don't want to say too much, but I mean, you know, if, depending on how you want to get into language on it, you know, usually it's resident versus non-resident, the two businesses we're talking about have brick and mortars and CUPs for those businesses, so I don't want to, I would, I would want to think carefully about creating a loophole accidentally with the language in the ordinance.
Well, I would defer to Scott and Matt, and thank you, Jesse, I, I just wanted to bring it up one last time because I go back and forth on it.
Your comment for me, like, resonated like leveling the playing field for everybody, and I don't know, I, since it's only, I mean, I want to say only $200, but like, it kind of seems like that might give others a reason to say that the playing field isn't level, if they have to pay and someone else didn't, and I, if it was, if I were like living in Mound and my business too, I'm thinking it might, it might be a good idea just to pay that so that everyone's on the same, you know, if it was $1,000, that's a little bit different, but I don't know the ins and outs of an accidental loophole or anything, you know?
Well, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, it would take some thought with regards to structure, because there are, it, I think when it comes to non-business situations, it's easy, do you have a driver's license or utility bill shows where you live, you're a, you know, you know, a citizen. Businesses can be, I mean, they may have, they may, maybe they run out of, what happens if they run out of Mound, but they're, they're a registered agent in Long Lake, you know, and, and it's, so it's, it's, it gets, it has to be some thought put into that, how to make it work. I do know that the discussion with regard, I believe the discussion that we had prior is, we wanted to have some type of fee enough to at least cover the administrative costs and not, and that's what I was looking at, it wasn't in fact trying to be, I mean, at this point, to be skewed with regards to you pay taxes for the city, you don't.
Right.
And that's something that, that did come up, so I think, I think if we're looking at doing something staggered, I wouldn't want to do it on the fly, right here, it's something I want to take a look at, because, like I said, we want to make sure we do it right, if, if that's the direction you want to go.
Well, and this is also new, maybe, you know, we may come up with all kinds of things that need to be looked at, but I, I just wanted to have one last conversation, because like I said, I keep going back and forth, and I kind of forgot the 200 fee is really to cover administrative costs, so.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Just to change the subject a little bit, if I may, Mayor, members of council, just along with the change that Mr. Kelly asked for with regards to making sure that the vehicles that are towing are not, are licensed and operable vehicles that could be on right-of-ways and high-end streets, I also added in a section, besides some other minor changes, I added a section in under, it's on page 853D, some objective standards for basis for denial, so that, which would be they have to, the applicant has to be above 18, they have to, the applicant has failed to provide, they didn't require the proper information, let's see, the applicant provided misleading information, the applicant is prohibited from doing it by law, or they've, and I just, I picked a number, I said the applicant has had the license revoked the previous two years, so we don't want, you know, I picked two years in there, and we'll see how it works, it can always be changed, and these are just some of the standards, it's, if you take a look at it, it does say including, but not limited to, so, it is, it helps provide staff at least some benchmarks they can use.
What was our original goal for, like, for this agenda item, was it to amend the fee schedule today or not, and then still continue discussion on finalizing language, or just finalizing both?
I think the idea was with regard to the ordinance itself and the fee schedule, my understanding was to have it ready for adoption by the council.
Okay.
I guess we want it ready for the season.
Because I, I think that there's also a timing issue with regards to getting the letters out.
Oh, sure.
Voting season is starting.
Any other discussion? Do we want to keep the, be the same, for everybody? Keep it at 200? Okay. All right, well, if there's no other discussion, I'll take a motion to approve page 852.
We're just doing these separate?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve, approve the ordinance on page 852.
All right, and can I get a second?
Second.
Is that good enough, Jesse? I saw your face.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Does we have to say it, or?
It's identifiable.
All right, we're doing the motion on page 852, got a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes, and then we got another one at 857, if someone wants to do that.
Can do that.
Okay.
I'd like to make a resolution, page 857, amending the fee schedule for 2024.
All right, we got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, two seconds, and any, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that passes, too. Thank you.
I was going to, before we move on fully, just to remind the council that in the packet is a letter from the LMCD regarding their ongoing licensing.
Yep.
So, I sent it out to every separately, I, I guess it's more informational than anything, but they are really requesting feedback or comments, I think at some point, probably a letter from either me or the, or the city, depending on what we prefer. I did really receive a letter from the Chief of Police yesterday supporting LMCD's efforts, so, I think they're just trying to make sure everybody knows what's going on, they said by the end of the month, so I guess no real rush, but if there's a comment you have, otherwise, like I said, you can reach out to me directly, we can do it here, however you prefer.
I just had one question on it, I mean, it's not, it was pretty straightforward, like you said, reading it, but the port of call, like, would we have to declare what that's going to be for Mound, and it's like, I don't know how people go about, they have to make sure they know where that is, and it's kind of interesting, but.
It's going to be, yeah, interesting, but that's, that's generally the idea, that they're going to be, they being LMCD, they're going to be looking for the cities that are affected by this, which, there's 14 of them, to determine where these business activities can take place.
I was curious if it's like, you know, each city has to have one, or if it doesn't work like that, and, you know, cities that have more lakes or have to have two, and maybe someone doesn't have to have two, I don't know.
Not just yet, it's, I mean, it's in draft form, but I don't think that they quite know yet how, how to work, but, yeah, it's, it's interesting hearing some other cities talk about it and hear about some of the other launches, I mean, it's nice to know we're not the only ones dealing with it, to get this feedback quickly, too, was, was good, so.
I had a couple of questions, too, I was curious about the renewal license cost.
I don't know that they have any.
I, I didn't, wasn't sure if they did either, and also, I'm sure they've been working with Alan Almas on this, but, and this might be just about piloting, but no watercraft in excess of 30 feet shall be rented on the lake?
So, my understanding is it's going to be separate from their, because the LMCD licenses Alan Almas separately.
Oh, okay.
We actually sign off on that through the LMCD, actually just this week, so, that's a different type of permit, but they, so they are already taking care of that, so I would guess this does not affect.
Okay, I mean, a 30-foot boat isn't very big, so.
Yeah, if you're renting it out for parties and things, you probably have much bigger, so.
Okay, that's great, those were my questions, thanks.
All right, number nine, we got a storm sewer rate study.
Mayor and Council, so this item really is just, I want to bring this back just for kind of a discussion and an awareness of kind of the, as we navigate the long-term financial plan internally and the rate study, we've been working on that, as you know, for the past few months, so as we've been navigating that, we've been really doing a deep dive into a lot of the city's financials, kind of the, and that includes, you know, as part of this plan being proactive with capital planning, that's like our buildings, our vehicles, our, you know, our infrastructure, like roads, our, you know, our water infrastructure, our sewer, and so we're doing, we've been doing a deep dive into that, we've been doing a deep dive into our debt schedule, kind of our, you know, current debt, future debt, TIP districts, really trying to bring that all together, and so, we've been meeting pretty, pretty frequently over the past few weeks, as our goal is to bring, bring it back to you at the beginning of May for the first review of, of these documents, and this will be kind of that initial discussion, to show you what we, what is in those documents, but then there's going to be questions for you as well as, as those documents continue to wrap up, and so, I guess, as part of this, in your packet, I did include a timeline kind of on those discussions and how we specifically got to the rate study, and the goal of both of these studies, and so, I guess, when I'm sitting in on those meetings, and I know I'm newer to the city, I'm learning a lot about kind of past decisions and what that means now, and, I mean, honestly, I think you guys are in a tough place, it's hard, you guys are having to make some really tough decisions, because, you know, as you know, our, where our utilities are at right now, and they need to be brought back up to operating in the positive, we're, and you already know all this, it's, it's, we, that's why we're doing these plans, I guess the one thing, when it comes to stormwater, and I'm very respectful of the decision that was made last fall not to do the study, but I just wanted to bring back, I guess, a little bit more awareness, because again, when we talked about it last fall, I didn't fully understand that we are still levying for capital for the stormwater on our general levy, so I guess, before we bring it back to you in May, I just wanted to make you aware that if we were to present it that way, it would, for the next 10 years, that 1% to 2% would be part of the general levy for capital, and that's your, the stormwater projects that we, we need to cover on a yearly basis, that includes projects that are kind of preventative maintenance, but also when we redo streets, you know, kind of the costs associated with that, so as, and in the packet, I kind of explain, you know, again, past decisions to help residents with their utility bills, so, again, our, our fund unfortunately is sitting in the negative 1 million, and so we do need to get that sustainable again, I think regardless, the plan will come back with a recommendation that we do need to increase it, we do need to, we need to get that out of the hole, I don't know what that looks like yet, that's kind of part of the, again, awareness piece tonight, one question I have is, are we wanting to get that 1% to 2% off the general levy, that essentially would reduce your, kind of the general tax levy, but again, bringing that back into enterprise fees, that potentially is going to affect your storm sewer rates, so, one thing that happened in 2018 is, I think we were, we were at about $30.58 per quarter, per bill, that got put down to $3 a quarter, and that's for, I think, every property, and so, again, that's kind of why we saw that downward trend, and why we're, we're not going to get any, we're not going to get this way anytime soon if we stay there, and so, one, I just wanted to create that awareness, and then I did provide some notes, you know, we have a 10-year average debt payment of about 237,000 in that fund, our storm rate revenue is only bringing in 140.
How much are we spending on interest on the debt alone?
I could get that for you. That's okay, I can get that for you, I don't know offhand, but.
It's something to account for, too, it's even more, you know?
Yeah, and, yeah, and so, yeah, that's something I can definitely look at for you.
Thanks.
But, so I guess, as we're wrapping up a lot of the, like, the big items to, to get these documents in front of you, I guess my question is, one, do we want to get that capital cost off of the general levy, do we want to bring that back into the fee schedule? And I guess, the fee schedule is, I, I think ultimately we can come up with something internally as far as where we think rates need to be to get us out of the hole, I just don't know, you know, a lot of cities do an analysis as far as like, commercial versus residential, because commercial lots are generally a lot bigger and produce more stormwater, and so I just don't think you would get the, like, that equity, like, who's paying for their, the amount of stormwater that they're producing, and so I guess, you know, it's a, it's not an easy thing to ask, I think one thing is staff, it would be nice, you know, to get this all done at once and just have it all right, right away, and so that's kind of my perspective, but I do understand, too, that that's a cost, and so, I do believe, you know, with the studies that we've been doing, I think, you know, internally, we could figure out some sort of structure to get us out at least, but I don't know if it would be like that, I don't know if we'd be able to create something that's truly capturing exactly like what everybody's producing as far as stormwater, and if it's going to be equitable, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because we are getting closer to bringing those documents to you, and I think I want them as far along as possible before we start asking questions about, you know, where do we want franchise fee revenue to start going in these, and, you know, if we're putting franchise fees towards our water set rate study, or our rates, or our utility funds, you know, how does that affect rates? Does that bring them down, how much does it bring it down, or if we put it towards our levy, how much, how does that affect taxes, so there's some decisions that will come back to you as far as shifting, I don't know, it'll help you visualize where everything's at, but then we just need a little bit more guidance as far as. I don't know, it'll help you visualize where everything's at, but then we just need a little bit more guidance as far as those, the, you know, that extra revenue you guys decided on and, you know, again, different rate structures and how how you guys feel moving forward with kind of what they've put together. So I guess tonight was about bringing awareness, I would appreciate some guidance if you are willing, like, again, you can keep it the same, I just wanted to tell you that that's how it would show up if we didn't make any changes, but I at least wanted to bring awareness that if you wanted any changes to that document before May, that's kind of where I'm at as far as what we could do and what we, you know, if you wanna see things changed a little bit before that first meeting.
So Maggie, we've we've talked about this, me and you, but how normal is this, how we're doing it now?
Um, that we're running in a deficit?
Well, that, but then also that we're running it out of the levy.
I mean, it's not recommended that you do it long-term, that you're supporting your enterprise funds with your general levy, like best practice is that you would support everything enterprise by fees, because those are the users of the utility and they should be paying for that instead of on their taxes.
So typically with any town Minnesota, this isn't normal, how we do it.
Um, I mean, it's not like I haven't seen, like I've, like I did work for a city once that had sewer debt, that did pay sewer debt off the levy, but the plan was always once that, once the debt was done, then they would pull it off. It's it's not so much for operations and capital. So I've seen cities do it, but I'm, you know, I'm never, I, but I've, a lot of cities don't and so again, the, I think best practice and I think a financial advisor would advise you, best practice is that you cover all of your enterprise funds out of fee-based, like making sure your fees are covering your operations and.
And get rid of the debt.
Yeah.
And get rid of it, yeah, so we went from thirty to three in, was it two thousand eighteen?
I think it was two thousand eighteen, yeah.
So they cut it and then, do you remember at that time how negative we were already?
I don't know, I just know when when talking to Noah, like by cutting, I think the cuts that were made in two thousand eighteen to, I just know that the cuts that were made, they just caught up this year, I guess, to twenty twenty-four, like so the rates back then that were cut are now where they were then, so it took six years for it to kind of get where, so, but long story short, by by making some of those decisions are, it it just made both of our funds unsustainable and that's why we're seeing the big deficit that we're at right now.
And unfortunately, we have to go door to door, right? When we went door to door for every house in mound, this first thing, well, that, can I drink my water and then why do I pay so much for water I can't drink, right? So that's one of the big issues and you know, next time people like us run for election, you know, don't overpromise and cut rates that you can't sustain, so.
Well, and one thing I wanna bring up to you is just because, you know, if if we're gonna take this step, uh, any of these changes, like we're, we still have plenty of decisions to make with regards to rates and again, one of those will be what do we do with our franchise fee revenue that we are, that we approved in twenty, moving forward with early in their year? So, you know, if we're seeing the rates kind of higher than we want them to be, the discussion will be, do we wanna take some of that excess revenue that we're, the new revenue, not excess, new revenue that we're gonna be seeing and putting that towards our utilities to help keep our rates were at a better place.
Reasonable level, yeah.
And 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 at a staff level too, we've been talking about that as well, you know, we've been having discussions about the future of our, you know, utility billing as well. You know, we we need to consider that in this study, do, is it, does that, does that mean going monthly and if we did go monthly, what does that mean and what is?
But it would make a lot more sense if this, the the three were in one deal versus we keep the sewer out.
I mean, I would say if, to me, and I'm just speaking more as like a financial thinker, like.
That's why we hired you.
Well, yeah, and 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 again, it's, I think either way is doable, I just think like, again, I understand it's money, but it, and I don't want, I want to be really respectful and mindful of that. I think when you are doing a deep dive like this and things, you know, for me, I'm learning a lot about kind of how our funds are talking to each other and and kind of kind of, you know, the nice thing is is what we've been able to now capture our needs for the next ten years and visualize that, again, being proactive with maintaining our infrastructure, replacing vehicles responsibly, making sure we're, you know, I think that's kind of the responsible way of of managing assets and and your finances. And so being able to visualize that and see how all of these documents are working together, I think by adding that other piece in, in a sense, you know, it it's completing all of the whole vision of your finances, again, it's, you don't have to do it, but I'm thinking if you're, if you actually do a deeper dive and you understand the stormwater impacts of all these properties and you're setting your structures now to set yourself up for a solid ten-year plan. I think that 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 adds a lot of, one, it allows you to speak to your residents with hard data on hard topics. And again, I think there is a way out of it without this study, but again, I think to me, I'm just seeing like once we're done with all this work, hard, this analysis is hard work and connecting all of this data, you'll have a solid plan for quite a while. And these, and I've worked on these plans in other cities, it's, it then just needs, I think every every few years, you kind of do an assessment just to make sure assumptions are still on track, but I mean, you're doing the hard work now and you're producing a document that'll last well into the future, that'll provide so much guidance for you and and again, your residents will, could ask, again, where, how did you set these rates, how did we get here, where are we going and I guess, I'm just, again, throwing out what I believe would be, would create like the best data possible for, you know, well into the future, but again, keeping in mind that there are other options as well. It's it's just, I don't know, I guess I'm not really sure where else to go with it, but it was just something I wanted to create awareness to and as we're kind of getting close to bringing you all together with the final drafts or preliminary drafts.
And so we're gonna be talking with elders doing a couple workshops in May.
Yep.
That's the tentative thought.
Early May, yep.
And actually, one of them, we're looking potentially at the in-between meeting of April and May, I think we have a three-week buffer, right? Was it eight?
April thirtieth would be the extra Tuesday in between there.
Okay, so if it works for everybody and them and, or you can't?
Well, I have surgery the day before.
Oh, yeah, you're just. Well, we'll shoot out days of.
No, I should, I should be okay, I think.
You have surgery the day before?
Yeah, it's just on my right eye, so.
Well, we wanna make sure we have. So obviously, we talked about this back in November and we said, no, we don't wanna do this. But again, you're convinced, looking at what what you've seen and going forward, that you still think we should take this on, pay the seven grand, do the study, have hard data, we can bring it back. And then most likely what that would eventually do is also separate that out from the levy side, saves, what'd you say, two percent?
It's about one to two percent, yeah.
I mean, obviously, there's still, you've got to pay it over there, but but it's actually kind of rip the bandaid off, just do it now, is there any other way to do this without paying seven grand?
Um, yeah, like I said, there's.
But without staying, staying the same way?
Uh, I mean, regardless, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure out rate, like different rates, I just don't think it would include, like right now, we can't have all properties paying, like commercial and residential paying the same fee and so we would have to figure out a structure internally over the next ten years that at least gets us in a better spot than where we're at. I just don't know if that analysis, if we have the capability of doing it in a way that analyzes like property sizes and type of, you know, it would, I think it would get us to where we need to be, but it wouldn't be, again, that that in-depth analysis that makes it more equitable between, I guess, properties and I don't wanna like scare the, I don't wanna like, you know, make that seem like a, again, like, I just, I don't know what I'm trying to say, I'm, it it's possible, yeah, that we can find a fee structure that gets us in a more that we're sustainable, I guess, over time and gets us out of the hole. Fees have to go up no matter what, we can't keep them at three, I just, again, if we want something that is taking, again, property size and storm, like what these properties are producing for stormwater into consideration so that they're paying for what they're producing, I I I think that's what the study would do, I don't think we have the capacity to do that internally.
Kind of like the franchise fee study where it gave us like three options too.
Yep.
You know, and we chose one and have a plan to look back on.
Yeah, so that that kind of did the same thing where it took property size into, like what they were using into consideration and their demand on the system.
And you can't just piggyback on the water and the sewer, sewer rate, I mean, you can't just piggyback on the data from there? Or is that what they're gonna do anyway, but it still costs seven grand?
No, uh, water and sewer are more integrated together, like they, you, sewer relies on water usage.
Right.
This is more, I think this analysis is more on what, like more on stormwater production, which it doesn't have to do with kind of water use or, so it's it's kind of its own.
It's its own animal, that's why we didn't include it last time, because we.
Cause we were able to say, at that time, I think it was discussed that it's, they're not connected enough to, like we can do it without it, because it's not connected to water and sewer.
So really, the big thing I'm hearing is, again, this is what you're doing, you're looking at all the data, you're working with elders to figure out where we wanna go and you're saying, rip the bandaid off now and just be done with, keep it on the levy side and move it over to the enterprise side is one thing, right?
Yeah, I mean, what, that's my recommendation is to move it over.
Do that, and then the other thing too, all these franchise fees that we just talked about before, my big deal is I don't want, you know, all our rates to go up, I know we gotta pay for it, but I don't wanna like go, oh my god, you know, you just doubled my rates again. Alright, so I wanna, if we're gonna do it, we gotta do it smartly and, but with these franchise fees that we're pulling out of this box going over here, if we can use those, like you said, it's pretty versatile on what we can use those for, we can, you know, potentially control our hikes in water, sewer, storm, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, again, that'll be part of the discussion, kind of where that new revenue will.
And we'll talk about it in the workshop, so.
Yeah.
Maggie, you were saying that on the levy side, that we'll never really catch up with the levy to pay off the debt, is that?
Oh, um, I don't.
If we didn't do anything.
If we didn't do anything, you said.
If we keep it at three, yeah. I mean, I'm kind of feeling like, on page eight seventy-nine, there's those two paragraphs, I think, that you mentioned, like what happened in twenty eighteen. So we're like stuck in clawback mode, you know, from frozen and and lowered rates.
Right.
And I don't know what the interest is on that debt, but I don't know, I honestly don't know what any of you guys think about the opinion of spending seven thousand, but to spend the seven thousand to get us to show us a plan we can reference to where we need to be, I mean, is a much greater benefit to the residents than actually seven thousand dollars long-term. And I don't know, like time is money too, I mean, I I would be in favor of having elders do this study, I mean, Maggie and Jessie and Noah have a lot to do and I don't know that this is, should be at the top of their plate too, I mean, they've got a lot of other stuff to do. It seems like it's having, like you said, conversely, a negative, it's having a negative effect on all of our funds until it gets made right.
Yeah, and I wanna say too, I, I think you guys are in a tough position, like this in, and, you know, decisions from previous councils, like I understand why they were made. And so it's a tough situation because, you know, you kind of have to redirect kind of some of some of the decisions and you have to, you kind of have to get the funds healthy again and and unfortunately, the decisions that were made are, it's kind of where we're at, where this is the reality of the situation and we have to figure out a way, I guess, a way forward and it's, it's a tough, it's a tough decision, because we have, again, our water at almost four, like over four in the hole, four million in the hole and we have our sewer, our stormwater over one million and so it's not easy to see that and, but it's understanding that our general, it, again, it's not sustainable long-term, we can't, we can't keep on this path and you know that and that's why we're doing the study, but I know it's not an easy decision and.
I read over it and just made the, like a little pros and cons list of, you know, spending that seven grand and I mean, we'll get the rate study with options and then we can, doesn't mean that they're telling us what we're doing with it, we get the study, we get, you know, I don't know, three options, let's say, and then we can pick, you know, just like we did with the franchise fees and can fine tune it, I mean, you don't have to have a line in the sand about what you're doing with the rates just the minute that study comes back either, but at least it gives us a plan.
You had mentioned, you know, if we didn't go with the seven thousand, you had some options. What what would those be incrementally, getting back up to where we should be or what what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think it would, again, it would be more of a staff analysis. You know, what what are, what's reasonable to get us out of the negative trend and get us healthy again, I just don't think, I just, I I don't think we can guarantee that the rates would be, like, that they would match what the properties are producing as far as stormwater, like I just, I don't, like an analysis would be more on track to match, like, what stormwater is coming off of properties. Our goal, I guess, would just be to get a structure in place that gets us where we need to be in the long term, it wouldn't, it wouldn't look at kind of the, you know, what each property is producing or into the storm system, if that makes sense, kind of similar to what our
It'd be a big guess.
Water and sewer are, yeah, it'd be a good guess.
Well, right now, everybody's paying three dollars, so you're, you don't feel comfortable saying, okay, businesses, I don't care how big your business is, you'll pay three twenty and residential pay three ten, you don't feel comfortable making a decision that way?
I I, again, I think we can, I think we can get somewhere, like we can structure it in a way that will get us where we need to be, I just don't think it'll be, it'll be more guessing and it'll get us out of the hole, but it wouldn't be, like if somebody was, like a commercial business came to us and said, why is my rate this? I don't think I could say, well, you produce, based on our analysis, you produce this much into our system and therefore you need to pay this much to support the system. Versus, you know, we would just say, you know, this is a structure we we established because. Um, versus, you know, we would just say, you know, this is a structure we, we establish, because, you know, we have operating costs, we have capital costs, we have debt costs that we need to cover, and so, this is the, you know, the structure that works to get us where we need to be. I, I, it, it just, I, I think it depends on the philosophy. Like, the way I usually see these structures set up is based on, uh, it's based on what these properties, their impact into the storm sewer. Um, so like, again, like, the property size, and when, when rain events happen, there's calculations that kind of kind of assume how much water then is going, coming off of those properties into the storm system, which-
And so, in this seven thousand dollars, elders would go look at every property in mound and determine how much stormwater?
I, they're able to, they're able to take property size into consideration, kind of, taking, um-
Give it pull the usage from all the properties in mound? Right?
No, not, not, not for stormwater.
Okay.
It's, it's like a, based on a algorithm, that you can look at property size, and, I don't know if Matt knows.
Well, part of it's in the proposal.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's consider, taking into consideration, uh, again, property size, and, and based on, kind of, storm, I think, data, kind of, like, rainfall, like, what those properties produce, and their demand on the system.
It's property size and use, too.
Yeah, I think it's like demand, yeah. What, what kind of stress they put on the system, I guess, um, based on how much stormwater they likely produce. But, again, I, we can get there. I, it was more of just an awareness, one, that we are supporting it. Two, that, um, again, if we did take that off, there is, we can't keep the rates where they are. We need to increase them. And while, while I know we can get there by, you know, coming up with something internally, I just wanted to, again, bring the option that there is another option, that elders could do a more comprehensive plan that would be taken to consideration more than I think staff could offer.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Is there a motion, or are you just looking for direction, or?
Um, I mean, I guess-
If you want to do a study.
The study would require a motion. I guess, I'm trying to, in general, get guidance on, maybe, do we want to see a long-term financial plan that takes that capital off of the general levy?
I would say yes, but I mean, I think either way, we should give Maggie an opinion of which way we want to head, just to get May, uh, keep May on track, right? Whether we do the additional study or not, I mean, I personally would vote that we do it. But, that's just me. Okay. Councilor Pugh?
Yeah, I, I, um, I, I want to make an informed decision, and so, the study, I think, brings more light to the decision, but I think we, we do need to, um, we need to, to be aware of all of our options for this.
Well, and one of the things, too, is that, uh, maybe bringing in the both documents as is, is what we need to do. And that'll maybe give you more of a visual of how that one to two percent affects the general levy over the ten years, and then, um.
You talking about doing the study?
No, I mean, if you, if, if you, if you are not for the study right now, like, maybe instead, just bring in the documents as is, and then, I think.
So you could bring them to us?
You would see when we do our first meeting with elders, what.
And then we could do a rate study after?
It, yeah, I mean, it's-
Or is it too late?
I don't think it's too late, uh, but I think it would, it would delay things a little bit more, but at least it would provide you a visual of, I guess, more of a visual than I can give you tonight, as to where things sit. I mean, maybe, maybe, again, we can, as a staff, do an internal preliminary fee schedule, what we think it is, and how that affects utility rates, um, and, I don't know, I'm just throwing out some options, um, because I, I, I think it is kind of hard for you guys at the moment, um, I'm sensing. Um, because it, it's hard to visualize, I think, where, how that's affect- affecting your general levy and your rates, but, um.
Okay. Councilor McNeany?
I mean, we don't even know what elders has done for us from the, their last study, so I'd rather listen to what they've got to present in May, before committing to another seven thousand dollars for them.
Sure.
And like, see other options, possibly from you and Noah, on what could possibly be done.
Okay.
But, but, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to make this decision to spend more taxpayer money until we at least have a initial conversation with elders.
Yeah.
All right, Councilor Larson?
I think you're doing a great job, and I would trust what you would suggest without spending seven thousand dollars. I think, uh, there's other ways that we can reduce the debt in this city, and I think we've asked for this before in the previous group. What assets does the city hold right now that we do not need, but we continue to pay insurance, uh, you know, our liability insurance? And do I dare say, perhaps, okay, Mayor Holt's gonna, he, he's gonna-
Just talked about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are we gonna talk about that?
We can, yeah, yeah. I literally just talked about that.
Oh, you did?
Today.
Did I not hear it?
No.
Oh.
I didn't talk to you about it.
No, no.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about it in a minute.
Oh, in a minute, okay.
Let's do that.
I just think we have a lot of city-owned property out there that we could put up for sale, and I think we could at least put a major dent, in my humble opinion, uh, into this debt we have. And if you could quickly tell me, if you know, back in two thousand and eighteen, those were decisions being made, obviously, not by us. None of us were on the council in two thousand and eighteen.
Right, right.
Do you know what their philosophy was, why they had it so low?
Um, I, I don't-
Was it political reasons, they wanted to get re-elected, or what was it?
I don't know offhand. All I know is, I, from conversations with staff, I think that there was, at the time, residents who came forward, um, concerned about their utility rates, and I think that was the solution at the time, was to make those cuts.
Knowing that we'd be here, and we've talked about this, yeah, for a year.
Then we have to do it here.
Well, and that, that makes sense, because when I campaigned in two, twenty eighteen, and went door to door, the first thing everyone said to me was, the water rates were too high, I mean, consistently, you know, it was like ninety percent of the doors they knocked on. That was their number one issue.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say that this council made some hard decisions on the levy, moving forward, and I think we, I think we have to make a tough decision here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, whenever this comes up, but we'll discuss this at a workshop? Is that what we're talking about?
Let's talk about that in a minute, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so it'll come up, and I, and again, even though, um, I think it was just good to kind of talk through this a little bit more, um, again, I want to get you the best documents possible when we meet again, and, um, so this has been helpful.
So just to confirm, it sounds we're both half and half, doing this study or not, right? If, if we wait till the workshop of elders, and we talk about this for two hours, what they've come up with, can we say, oh, by the way, we don't like what you did over here with, you know, how we're currently doing our, our deal?
Hmm.
With our stormwater, stormwater sewer. Can we pivot and be like, fine, do the seven thousand dollar study, fix us, whatever?
Yeah, I think it's always possible to do the stormwater
Later.
Later, um, just keeping in mind that things would likely get delayed, um, as far as, as far as just getting the final, final document done.
Okay, well, let's, I think that makes a lot of sense, that why don't we see what they come up with finally? And then, maybe we just add this as a addendum down the road?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
As long as you don't, I mean, I'm sure they'll take our money three months from now.
Yeah.
If they want to do another study, so.
Yeah, and I, and, and I do-
I do like getting it off of there, and I do like making the hard decision. We've already made a lot of these. I don't like spend, spend another seven grand, though. But, at the same point, I want to trust your opinion, too, because you, you brought this back up.
Yeah, and I did, I, I did, and I think it, I mean, it, it was kind of hard for me to do that, but I, I do want to be open and honest, like, and I want you all to be aware of, you know, I want you to get the documents that you want out of this, and I want you to be comfortable with, it, it is hard decisions that you guys have to make, and so I want you to be comfortable, as comfortable as you can be, you know, with this process and getting where we, you know, want to be in the end, so. Um, I think bringing it up was, was very helpful for me, and hopefully, you know, brought some, a little bit more information to you, and again, we'll be meeting in probably end of April, and I think that'll be a really good opportunity to, to get a lot of that information to you, and to ask more questions, and kind of keep moving forward.
Okay. Well, we appreciate all your time and energy, and we look forward to a couple weeks. Thank you. Okay, so now we got comments and reports from councilmembers, Councilwoman Pugh?
Well, I attended the Gillespie Center's Board Strategic Planning Session. They're moving forward in, um, reshaping their vision emissions, so I think there's a bright future ahead.
Councilor Larson?
Uh, I have nothing to say.
Councilor McNeany?
In tandem with Ms. Ms. Pugh's comment, as everybody's noticing, they're making huge efforts and doing a lot of fundraisers at Gillespie. And so, we're gonna be trying to keep those on social media, to get people over there to all their events, and they have a lot of them coming up, so. Thank you to everybody for going.
Don't finish the class. I was just gonna say, they did get, um, you know, they have the breadshelf with bakery stuff, with cub food and, um, Mac, whatever the new store is.
Macadoo?
Macadoo's have, um, started contributing on a daily basis, five days a week. So they have lots of bread, and some, um, meats even, from those new, um, donors to their program. So people who are in need of stuff go over there, and it's, it's, uh, you know, the revenues from it, which are small, but they're significant. To them, it's like doubled.
Can anybody do that, or is it more?
Anybody can go over it, they just ask you to make a donation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You?
I don't have anything.
All right.
Um, so I'll get to your comment.
Okay.
I just asked for a workshop today, didn't I? Um, so what we're talking about, Big Cedar, right? Uh, we, we've talked about this before, of, we own this building that we're sitting in, and we basically are about flat on it. I mean, in other words, you know, we, we spend all this time doing all this energy in and out work on this for about a flat, but it takes all their time and energy to run this place, right? Now, we do meet here. Um, last time I checked, we have an upstairs conference room at the, our new building, which we probably should have merged to there a long time ago. The other thing, too, is we also have, uh, you know, potentially the PAC, right, at the high school. I mean, there's places we could meet. As you can see, we have so many people here. Um, and even when we don't, that's about the same amount of people that could fit up there.
Yeah.
Um, do we have to be on a nice bougie, you know, whatever, we'll bring it up there if we want it. If we don't, we'll just sit in front of a table. I don't, I'm not really that worried about it. Um, the tech and all that, you know, so, what I want to say is, I think we should probably workshop that, if that's something that we're interested in talking about. If we're not, it's a suggestion that I think me and you talked about a while, a while back.
Yes.
So more specifically, talking about, like, what exactly?
We own this building.
Yep.
And we own it because we used to be here. Now, we're here for this, that's it. Now, there's other groups that use this, and, you know, we do have contracts that would end if we did sell, that type of thing. We, we would, hey, I don't know, take a guess what this thing's worth, right? I've had our old finance director run numbers on all the expenses that we have spent. Uh, day to day, month to month, but then also, you know, there's out, you know, the up, the elevator, right, was, who even used it, you know, but there's, you know, that's a ton of money to fix that or maintain it. There's light bulbs and snow plowing and this and that, so. That it could be used for, someone could just keep it the same way and rent out space, someone could take it down and put something else here. I mean, there is issues with, uh, zoning, right, um, and how it's, well, there's not any issues, we'd have to change it, right, because it's, it's zoned a certain way, if you look at it kind of how we are, and I think that we ran that by you?
No.
And we're gonna, we're gonna run it by you?
Yes.
Okay. To see if that's, so, first thing, I guess, would be maybe a you conversation. Second would be, I think it'd be good to get this on a workshop, just see if there's any, I mean, I guess three of us have to agree on this.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping to workshop it for sure, like you said, it's, there's other places to meet, but then, like, the tech aspect, too, you know, you gotta figure all that out.
We can figure it out.
Can we workshop it just before a council meeting?
Yeah, that's on, well, remember.
On a separate day.
Now, we're gonna be six o'clock.
Not till May.
So it'd be five o'clock. Well, I'm thinking this is gonna take a minute to get.
Yeah.
This is probably gonna be a thing.
Yeah.
Can you put together a list of other properties that we could include in this workshop?
There's a bunch of properties.
Put up for sale?
We've asked for that. We've asked for that multiple times, and we didn't get anywhere with it.
This is before.
Pardon me?
Before.
Oh, before.
I mean, there are, there's a lot of mound land and-
There's a lot of land out there.
Cars that aren't used.
So the land, remember, we did do, we did that, was that last year or the year before? Where we said, if you're in a neighboring property, that we're, we want to get rid of those. So we've already kind of done some of that, and these are the useless properties in between two people's properties, right? That's one thing. We don't really have a ton of other just vacant land, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know of a whole bunch of actual usable property that you could, like, build something on. Um, beyond that, other buildings, I, again, I don't know where, what you guys are thinking about, but.
So you meant, like, workshopping, like, this property and others, like, just kind of getting?
I'm saying this one for sure, but yeah, we could add in other.
Well, I mean, if you go on the property map, there's a lot of property that mound owns. So it would be interesting to kind of look that over.
You're talking about the ones in between everybody's houses?
Well, no, but even, like, off one-ten over there, I guess, they're, they are now building on that property, but it would be, I think, useful for us to acknowledge what all they are, and to see if we have any opportunity.
Okay. Jessie, you're gonna have to pull what we did. It was either last year or the year before, where we got, we, we already requested, we don't want all these extra properties for no reason. Um, even if there's an easement or something, we'd still keep the easement, but, you know, here, you neighbor, you take it, you own it.
You mow it.
Mow it, but they're, yeah. So I think we did already do part of that, and there was a ton on there.
Well, let me put a caution to this. I think it's, it makes sense to, to look at your assets and get rid of assets that aren't valued. But I remember being gone during the eighties, and coming back, and seeing how this city sort of divided up all those lots on Island Park into small lots. The lots on Island Park are smaller than lots in the city of Minneapolis. And so, I just want us to, to be deliberative to set some standards, once we find out what we have, and not just say, let's just sell it all. I think we have to be good stewards of what we sell.
I agree with that, but I think a comprehensive look at just necessities.
Well, yeah, you gotta look at it.
And then, kind of, yeah.
I just don't want us to look and then start selling.
Right.
So we, we did.
I agree with that.
We did do it, we already did it. Do you remember it? You weren't there. We did it within the last three years, because I was here, and we looked at, there was a map, and there was all the different in-between properties. And so, we would not be subdividing those into a separate lot. You'd be the neighbor on this side, this side, this, you know, that's the only person that has an interest.
So you're just talking about the in-between properties.
That's what I'm talking about.
We have, we have other properties, too.
We've already done that. So I'm just saying, maybe shoot it out to us, what we already did.
Yeah, let's take a look.
Well, is there anything left to do?
Well, that's the thing, with the in-betweens, there, no, we already have a policy on how we get rid of those.
How we sell.
So we just did that. Um, you were here?
I think so. I remember, I don't remember what the lot was, but
Early last year?
We were all here for that, right? It was like the sealed bid thing about-
Yeah, how we get rid of these.
You know, there's two neighbors, they, if someone's not interested, then the other
We did a policy.
party gets it, or if they have a bidding war, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you were here, so we all did that last year. We just all forgot about it. Um, the other more meaningful lots, we don't have a lot of, unless, again, you guys can come up with them, but, um, we don't have a ton of, like, buildable properties per- We don't have a ton of like buildable properties per se that are actually like that we own.
Yeah.
Anymore, so these, most of these are a little scratchy in-between things and we came up with that policy last year, so can you find that policy and email it to us? And then if we want to look into that deeper, add that to the workshop as more of a discussion, we can do that. Again, not saying tomorrow we're selling Centennial, but I'm just saying it's, it's something that we should probably look into, talk about. It's paid off, um, there's a lot of money in this, potentially worth something that we could take on all this. You know, we just talked about how much debt we got in all these different places, so I think it's worth looking into and literally this is what we use it for. What we're doing here and planning in parks, so. Now, we did have West Tonka Historical Society and remember we did just sign a contract? Now, I made sure that the contract said that if we don't own this anymore, I mean, we'll give them a notice. And, you know, we're respectful, but, uh, as well as there's other, you know, groups in here. And then the basement has a bunch of stuff from us that we'll have to move over there.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, let's workshop that, do you want to shoot a day that we could figure that all out?
Yes.
Before a meeting?
Yep, and, um, so we are moving to six and I believe we decided to do that for the second meeting in May cause it would line up better with our, um, the Mount Compass coming out, which comes out at the beginning of May so that we don't want anybody to get a, uh, a notice a little too late, but yeah. So that would be the only caution, I think somebody mentioned it, but if we do get into that later into May, we'll be. If it's before a council meeting, it'll be five P.M., so, but currently there aren't any May workshops on the books prior to either of our meetings that I can think of, so.
Okay.
I should mention too that we've talked about this in the planning commission and they have decided they're not gonna move to six o'clock until they kind of get a track record on how it's gone for us.
Oh.
So they'll consider it after we can give them some feedback, um, feedback from residents, so they'll then look into it.
Okay. So that's that, so we'll do a workshop. The other thing we are gonna do a workshop on, is that next, the fire thing next week?
April twenty-third, six P.M. before our regular meeting, Chief Peterson will be here to kind of talk about the future of Mount Fire Department, he's been talking about it for years, but especially as it relates to duty crews and how we can continue to stay staffed in the way we are, uh, continue to recruit and, um, mostly just retain those who are on as people continue to look for new houses. Um, our neighbors in Minatrista are, are, are growing very quickly and there's been, some of our members have, have looked into moving into Woodland Cove and he's, he's got a very good, um, presentation, I've seen it, I think you'll all be grateful for his time. So we've been trying to get him on the books, so that'll be six P.M., uh, April twenty-third.
So I was in that meeting as well and we had a few of the other mayors, uh, from the other town. What I said specifically was we weren't, we're not doing anything until we get the five of us to talk about this in a workshop. If you read the paper the other day, it sounds like other cities are moving and creating committees and stuff already. I said specifically, and he was there, and so was Peterson, that we're not moving anything, we're not even doing anything at all until we all talk about it. That we're, you know, the five of us, so that's what this is and I, unfortunately, because he was out of town, we would have done this about a month ago, but it got pushed off because that's what worked for people. So if you see that ad in the paper or the article, um, other cities starting their own fire commission or whatever, we're not there yet, but hopefully we get there, but we'll, we'll see, we'll see what we all want to do, so. I'm gonna meet with Councilmember McAnany and Maggie Thursday morning, we're gonna talk about some options that you've come up with for a website kind of refresh and, uh, you know, excited to do that, so. Um, and then last thing, I don't want to talk all night here, so just, uh, I'm looking at our council priorities and um, maybe next time we can kind of go through a little bit more in depth, but, uh, if you guys remember kind of what we're trying to be doing, I mean, release the money for the ten point three, one step closer to it. Once we get that released, design, water main work, that kind of thing. Uh, get more money from the, this year's bonding bill, working on it, again, we got the million from the, the Fed side. We never kind of went down the lobbyist route, right? So right now, should I just kind of scratch that for this year?
I would say at this point, it's probably too late in the session to consider it.
Okay, so I'm gonna kind of scratch that out. Uh, what, another thing, and again, this is in number one of what we're talking about, one, he was test for McAnany's, again, we just talked about that, we did that. Our whole budget section, we just kind of talked about that a little bit. Uh, we'll talk more obviously into this next month and stuff. Number three is communication with website and stuff, again, just, we're, we're cranking through these things, Facebook, Instagram's another thing we're gonna talk about. Maggie, correct me if I'm wrong, but fire, fire department, uh, liquor store, did they introduce the city?
I know the fire department, actually, I think both of them did, yeah.
Both of them, okay, so that's good, so I'm gonna take that off. The other thing is meet the staff, uh, Wednesday? Like a push on Facebook, meet, meet the city staff, so I'm just trying to remember these things so we can.
We're, we're doing that, we're kind of waiting to launch that with Instagram.
Okay, good. Uh, newsletter, get, you know, more pages, park feature, that kind of thing. Uh, digital newsletter, which again, we'll probably talk about with the new website. You know, skip, I mean, public works director, you just put, put an ad out, quote enforcement, we're always working on that. Mount Citizen of the Year, tree light ceremony, uh, we're gonna be working on that with WCC. Email signatures, I saw your email signature, good job. Uh, state of our water update, that's number eleven, we just did that. Development, we are open for business, our moratorium's off, I just talked to Jesse, um, he's gonna reach out. We, we had a couple groups that were interested in doing stuff, like literally like the week before we did that. So I said, well, why don't you just call them and say, hey, we're, we're open, you know, if you guys want to resubmit something. Spirit legs, so I, anyway, we can go through all that a little, but I'm just, my point is it's only April and we've crushed through a good chunk of this, so. I think I'm happy with that, if you guys want to add anything or talk about, oh, statutes or A versus B, we just talked about that. And move the council meetings to six instead of seven, number eighteen, so we've done a lot of these things, so. Pretty happy with that.
I, I do have one request.
Yeah.
The, the library.
Yep.
When it closes, we don't have a date yet, but they're projecting it's gonna be closed for about fifteen months.
Yep.
Um, so I think I would like for us as a council to write to our one, well, soon we may have a second one, Hanipin County Commissioners, as well as the Facilities Director, um, saying that we really think it's important that there be a temporary location during the time that the library is closed and there is commercial space.
Yep.
In the town that can accommodate them, and I think we have to really push that, that that's an absolute need, um, to have that, um, you know, people have that access and, uh, because a lot of people go there and use the computers specifically as well as the, you know, getting the books is, is something that can be done sort of remotely and by phone, but if people need to use those computer sources, resources, that's not, most of the space where they're at. So I'd like for us, as a council, to send a letter to those individuals.
And just, you know, I've had some conversation with.
Kevin?
Can't remember who it was, but they, um, it was about renting the old Tonka toy, there's a spot in there that that would. Again, I don't know, I mean, they gotta figure out if that works for them and if they can afford it, whatever, but I know Jesse's had conversations too, so. We are making a little bit of noise, but yeah, it doesn't hurt for more people to say that. Uh, Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, K- Kevin is.
The south, the south part?
No, he's, he's the north part.
He's the north part, okay.
He's part, it's a part of Mount, um, west of one-ten, that's part of Maple Grove and then the other part of Mount is part of six, which is with Minnetoka and other lake cities.
Last thing, I had, I had a meeting with the Boys and Girls Club, uh, group. They keep saying Mount and I said, well, you know, it's, it's like Benetour, isn't it, like the next thing on?
Well, it's, it's on the border.
But anyway, we talked about that and they're kind of sprucing up their programs and stuff, so it was good to, good to meet those, those folks and.
It's a beautiful facility.
And I've never been there and I said, well, you should invite us all out sometime, so, I said, well, maybe we might do this, so. Uh, anything else you guys want to talk about? All right, uh, do you got anything?
I would only add, I believe Commissioner Anderson is gonna be here for our next council meeting, actually, so that's timely. And, um, I didn't know how concerned you were with seeing, I was, the mayor walked in on me earlier trying to, I was doing some mockups for.
Yeah.
Uh, signage on the other side, uh, it's, it's really nothing impressive, but, uh, I was asked to bring it back this meeting, so I have it.
Do you have it up?
Yeah.
Can you bring it up?
Basically, uh, Andy and I were out there in the winter and so that's the sign when you first go, come in, so we're trying to do something to basically add a.
Zoom in.
Oh, yeah, I can make that bigger, sorry. Try to, this is the first thing you see when you get into the, to the parking lot, so we're trying to do something like this to reference the code, the license requirement, get as much on there without being too wordy, cause, um, I mean, really the point is to have something there and that way the police can enforce it. That was, the message we got was if, you know, even if people want to claim they haven't seen a sign, you know, you can point at it when there's not a clearly indicated marker there. So we'll do something similar to, um, over in the park, or sorry, it's, it's, there's, it'll be if you're standing in the parking lot basically facing Surfside Park to, to get more into the, uh, no soliciting portion of the code. We're just trying to, and then there's one smaller pole that was tough to just, to show on a display really quickly. It's gonna look nicer, but, uh, we don't, the point is we're gonna try to make it as obvious as possible without being really annoying, um, utilizing current signage spots, so, and not interfering with any sight lines too cause it's kind of a tight little parking lot there, so. Otherwise, I don't have anything.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
And I agree that less is more, just to show the code so the police can point at it and say it's right there.
Hopefully.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, all right, we're adjourned.